Hey, welcome everybody to the, we're a minute early, but that's okay. My watch says six. Oh, look at that. Well done, Deb. Welcome everybody to the Jennings County School Corporation work session this evening. We do have a guest speaker tonight who just walked in, so hopefully he had a chance to take a breath and settle in. Barry Gardner with Policy Analytics. Do you want to introduce him?
Welcome Barry to speak with us. We've been working with Policy Analytics for almost a full year now, but a lot of resource of help. Barry, how many school corporations around the state do you work with now?
I work at approximately 18 districts.
So, a lot of districts around the state. So, some very important insight for us. Last board meeting, we talked about all of the financial impacts that we have going on with not only AVM, but property taxes, local income tax, and also federal grants. So Barry's going to give us some really specific insight to that property tax piece this evening.
We will remind Barry you and everybody in the room, we are live streaming the work session this evening, so it will be recorded and uploaded to the website. So, welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity to be here with all of you again, Barry Gardner with Policy Analytics. Tonight, as was said, we're going to take a deep dive into some of the impacts that we are seeing as a result of Senate Enrolled Act One. We kind of take a step back to the spring. Senate Enrolled Act One was signed into law by Governor Braun on April 15th and was really driven by this goal to create property tax relief specifically for homeowners. And at the end of the day, really rewrote property taxes and how they interact and operate, not just with schools, but with governmental units really across the state. And so, tonight we're going to talk through that a little bit, some of the mechanics, what we're seeing a little bit from a statewide perspective, and then also drill down to what we are seeing specific from Jennings County Schools and some things for the district to be aware of as we see how the legislation is beginning to play out. And so, feel free, if there's any questions along the way, feel free to ask. We can also do those there at the end, either way is really fine with me. There we go. So, we, Policy Analytics is going to, we actually work not only with school districts, but our firm works with governmental units across the board. So we work cities, towns, counties, and I hope lead the schools division, working with about 80 districts across the state. And really, there's three main pillars of impact that we are talking with school districts about. That is that we're going to see some impact on Senate Enrolled Act One in terms of tax rates. And we're going to talk about what Senate Enrolled Act One is potentially going to do to tax rates really for school districts. Also has impact on the levies or the revenues that districts receive at the end of the day. And we're going to kind of outline those. And then we're also going to take a look at what does this mean in terms for the taxpayer? If we start to play out this legislation, and we've created a little illustration here at the end of what would a taxpayer potentially see in terms of their own property tax bill at the end of the day? What does that mean for all of us? And with all three of these, there's some pretty significant changes as a result of Senate Enrolled Act One across the state. When we try to, as best we can, simplify school finance, which is not often easy sometimes to do, property tax revenue, that's really what we're speaking primarily about tonight. The education fund is funded really on that per student basis and the state funding formula. We're talking about property tax revenue, which funds your operations fund. And at the end of the day, we really look at net assessed value, which is the value of each individual piece of, what we call parcel or piece of property across the school district. So homes, farmland, businesses. And when we add up what they are assessed at, that we call that net assessed value, that's after any deductions they receive. We're going to take that net assessed value times a tax rate and it's going to generate revenue. And we've been really in this, the last, gosh, close to 10 years, been living in a situation where each year assessed value, and specifically net assessed value, has increased. Our assessment system is market-based, and so as home prices have gone up, so has the assessed value. And as assessed value goes up, it allows us typically to do a few things. One, we can keep a steady tax rate and generate additional revenues that maybe help with inflationary pressures. We can also allow the tax rate to decline and still maybe generate the necessary revenues as assessed value grows. With Senate Enrolled Act One, we're really beginning to look at that bottom row, which is new, in that we're facing the result of declining net assessed value. And as net assessed value goes down, the tax rate must go up in order to generate the similar amount of revenues. And that's one of the new mechanics of Senate Enrolled Act One across the state. As declining net assessed values happen, it's going to have impact on tax rates and it's going to have an impact on revenues at the end of the day. Why and what's driving this? So, the legislative changes were meant really across the board. They in some ways pulled multiple levers all at once. And the first is in the deductions that a homeowner receives. So previously, if you've ever looked at your property tax bill, there's a gross assessed value, again, that tends to be market value or associated with market value, you can sell your home for. And then you have deductions. You had a standard deduction of $48,000 and typically a supplemental deduction of 35%. The new legislation faces out that $48,000 deduction over the next six years down to zero, but at the same time, it's increasing the supplemental, increasing that percentage really up to a two-thirds deduction. Why? Legislative body thought and mathematically would play out, a standard deduction of $48,000 becomes worth less and less each year as my home value grows, because it's a stagnant figure. It doesn't grow with the home. So the value of that deduction becomes worth less. Where a percentage deduction, the deduction grows as a proportion as my home value grows. And so that was the desire, was to increase the deduction for homeowners. And at the end of the day, a two-thirds deduction is going to be greater than our original $48,000 and 35%. And the theme really tonight, we start trying to take away some nuggets, right, or some simple thoughts with this, is anytime I'm increasing deductions, I'm going to drive down net assessed value. And then when we drive down net assessed value, that's going to have impact on the rates and revenues. And so this is the first place we begin to see deductions increase, in this case specifically for homeowners. The other component that they have provided for homeowners to try, I think, to create relief a little faster, because again, the last slide is a six-year phase in of that deduction, is a new homestead credit. And it is 10% of your tax liability, or what you pay in property taxes, up to $300. And it's after the property tax caps. So if I had a home that was worth $150,000 and the most I could pay is $1,500 in property taxes due to that 1% cap, I'm going to get an extra $150 off my tax bill in 2026, which that $150 is then revenue now that is not coming to the schools and to the other local government units, right? It's a revenue that's going to be kept by the homeowner at the end of the day. And so this starts in 2026, and we see it have some impact, as we'll show later a little bit, on the district's revenue as we move forward. They also increased some additional deductions. They're familiar, there's been a 65 and over, there's been a disability deduction, there's been a veterans deduction. They've increased those and also increased the income levels that allow a person to qualify for those. So again, some additional deductions that play out in the legislation as well. The other area, and this is new, is that they introduced deductions now for the 2% property tax class. And the 2% property tax class, it contains apartments, rentals, long-term care, agriculture. And it phases in again over the next six years up to a one-third deduction. And they also changed the base rate calculation on farmland. So I've numbers pulling here again. I think originally the base rate per acre was supposed to be around $23.90, and I think it's coming in now around 2020, 2140 on a per acre basis. I may be a little bit off on that, but it's a couple hundred dollars difference. And so again, that has impacted then on the revenues and the rates of the district as well, as they've created these additional deductions in the 2% class. The last and probably most complex is the changes they made to business personal property. And business personal property is the equipment associated with a business, right? So a data center, you might think servers, the computers inside of a farm, you might think a combine, right? The equipment that's used to run that business. And two changes were made. The first is there has always been what's been known as a de minimis amount. It's recently been up to $80,000 that a business did not have to report equipment for state taxable purposes. So if I had a $75,000 piece of equipment, I didn't have to report for taxable purposes. Starting in 2027, that threshold now goes to $2 million. So now if I have a million and a half dollar piece of equipment, I beginning in 2027 will not have to report that for taxable purposes. And really what that does is it pulls assessed value out of the system, giving that really exemption to businesses and their equipment, and that's going to pull assessed value out of the system. And again, that drives down at the end of the day AV overall, and specifically net assessed value. And we're going to see that a little bit in your specific data in a moment. And it has some impact, but you're still going to be left with a decent sized amount of your assessed value that's business personal property. I think it's around 13% still after that deduction comes out. And the concern, then again, I think from the school's perspective, is the second part of the business personal property. Currently, a business can depreciate a piece of equipment down to a 30% floor. So if I have a $10 million piece of equipment, a large piece of equipment, I could depreciate it down to $3 million, and I pay taxes on that remaining $3 million. Any new piece of equipment from January 1 of this year moving forward, I can depreciate that down to zero for its taxable purposes. So it creates a way to lessen my tax liability. And what we don't know is what kind of economic incentive that might create. If I'm a business and I have a lot of large equipment, maybe do I replace it a little sooner knowing that I can eventually over a depreciation cycle get that down to a lower taxable purpose? Do I create a new entity, a new LLC, in which I shift my business personal property over to the new LLC and depreciate that down? And the challenge is that's still going to take time, because even if I purchase that new piece of equipment, it's going to have its own individual depreciation schedule, and that varies depending on the piece of equipment. But typically, it's at least four to five years and sometimes longer. So we won't know that full impact of the second portion of did it create this incentive? Or what's that impact really for multiple years down the road? But it's, so it's something to keep an eye on. Really, at the end of the day, when you think about it, 20 years down the road, if we really play this out, it's a good chance it's eliminating most of the business personal property as a taxable entity at the end of the day with this new piece of equipment come on and with that depreciation schedule change. The last, and this has been a little bit new, I was touching this briefly, the two years ago, the state legislators put in caps or thresholds, excuse me, on the debt service fund. And basically, they said at the time, if your debt service rate was above 80 cents, you had to take a project, you were forced to take a project to a capital referendum. Didn't matter if it was $2 million or $200 million. It was, you had, you're above 80 cents, you had to take it. They've now lowered that to 70 cents. The area though is probably a little closer, I think, from the Jennings County perspective, is we have this 40 cent threshold. And that really, I'd say is the lesser of the two impacts. The 40 cent threshold says that if, now treats every project like a controlled project, meaning that you have to do two public hearings, have to wait 30 days, see if there's any taxpayers, enough taxpayers, enough to roughly 500 that file a petition against that. If they do, then you're forced then to maybe go down some different legal steps. If they don't bring the petition forward, you're allowed to move forward with the project. Right? That's kind of the process. And that's been in place for many years, a lot of districts go through that. The reason we bring this up is, one, this is in our slide deck because they've changed it to 70/40, but secondly, they've created mechanics that are going to drive up tax rates. And so tax rates are going to be pushed up against this threshold. And so it's an area just that more districts are having to keep an eye on. So if you hear that, that's some of the changes, we'll talk a little bit about that. Okay. Let's talk a little bit about some statewide pieces here. We recently, Policy Analytics held a seminar, we brought in about 60 school districts to talk about Senate Enrolled Act One and what we are seeing in the data. And in our analysis, as we, in our model, and again, we have a software model that takes this down to the parcel level across the state, and as we looked at the schools' changes over the next six years, right now, the average school tax rate in the state of Indiana is right around a dollar two, call it a dollar three if you round up. And over the next six years, you would potentially see that rate rise to a dollar 37. And that's what the district's keeping, the same amount of levy or revenue in their debt service fund as they currently have, so it's not increasing any levy in their debt service fund, and it's just allowing the operations fund to operate like it has in previous years where it grows by the growth quotient of the state of Indiana. So really kind of status quo is the best way to say it, right? And so overall, we're seeing that rate rise. And so this is a mindset shift, right? Because we've been in a situation in a lot of districts across the state that have been able to manage to a steady tax rate, right? A lot of districts often ask, what is the state tax rate? They try to be around that 95 cents, maybe to a dollar, and they say, okay, we're going to stay at that 95 cents, and it's going to allow at least some revenue generation in both the operations fund and the debt service as assessed value grows. Well now, assessed value's not going to grow, it's going to decline. And as it declines, it's going to drive up the rate in order to generate those same amount of revenues. And so that's the mechanics that we're seeing as a result of Senate Enrolled Act One. And so, the idea of saying we have a flat or steady tax rate is a, really a situation that's going to be very difficult for schools to maintain, really almost impossible for districts to maintain, to be perfectly honest, because of the mechanics of the bill that... We're going to model some of this out locally here with Jennings County, but this is what we're seeing really across the state. And it's not just school districts. When we look at the county rates across the state, the 92 counties here in Indiana, on average, the county rates go from about 42 cents to roughly 60 cents. And so, we're seeing this happen with the other government units as well. So this isn't just a school situation. This is both cities, towns, counties, everyone within that piece. And this is not a surprise. If you've heard Chairman Thompson, Chairman Jeff Thompson, Representative Thompson is the chairman of House Ways and Means, he is the author of really, I know it's a Senate Enrolled Act One, but it was really driven out of the House, and he's really the author behind this. And his goal and his mind and his calculations is the property tax system will even itself out as all tax, basically payers, the tax rate moves to an overall $3 rate between schools, cities, towns, kind of collective, right? So we're not surprised to see the mechanics of the bill drive up tax rates, because that's what they stated intended to happen. It's a part of the mechanics of the bill. And so again, that's why we're seeing these happen, not just with schools, but with the other government units really as well. We look at cities and towns, again, this is a little more difficult because again, there's just different sized cities and towns and you look across the state, but as we tried to pare this back, again, the mechanics really are the same. This goes from about a dollar 16 to a dollar 62. And so, if you were to go back and add up those previous three slides, right, so dollar 60, add on another 60 cents, add on another, I think it was a dollar 30-ish in the first slide, we're above the $3, right? It's the mechanics of what Chairman Thompson intended with the bill. So again, not surprised to see the mechanics, but this is hard, right? Because if I go back to it, we're really not changing the amount of revenue, but the rates are rising. And oftentimes, we associate rising tax rates with additional revenues. And that's just not the connection anymore. And the way rates have been connected to revenues in the past have changed as a result of Senate Enrolled Act One. And that's a really difficult concept, right? It doesn't make sense, I would say in some ways, right? But that is really the mechanics of the bill, is that the rates don't reflect the revenues situations that we've seen. So again, this is going to be a challenge, I think, for all schools across the state. It's going to be a challenge for cities and counties because of this, you know, when taxpayers see rates rising, they're going to think that we're increasing, you know, we're increasing the rate, but really it's oftentimes the mechanics of the bill at the end of the day. The other piece again that we're seeing really statewide is, this is looking really at the impact of the operations fund net levy. Okay? At the end of the day, the dollar's coming into school districts, and the impacts, we'll talk a little bit more later about some local income tax revenue that schools receive, and James County Schools is one of those. And really, the purple line is the teal line, excuse me if I explain this well, is the pre-Senate Enrolled Act One, so what we would have expected in revenues. And the post-Senate Enrolled Act One is the purple. And really what you can see is there's a 2 to 2.7% annual decline in per student revenue across the state of districts that receive these local certified shares like Jennings County, right? So what we know in the data is that revenues are going to be muted to declining over the next three years. Then they kind of settle in in 2028 and start to have a, you know, an upward trend again. But overall, we see the gap that grows with the revenues we would have expected, which are the revenues that now we project to come in on a statewide average. And again, part of this was the intention of the bill. Again, if I go back to Chairman Thompson, not to quote him too much tonight, but one of the comments that were made were districts were going to receive not less revenue, they kept talking this term less of more, right? So instead of getting 4% revenue increases, you might get 2% revenue increases. Now, the data's showing it may be a little more impactful than that, but the intent of the legislation was to constrain revenues, because I think at the end of the day, there was some thinking that schools had enough dollars in their operations fund and could survive the next few years with more muted revenue streams. And again, so none of this is really surprising, I'd say, from a statewide piece. This is what we expected to happen as they really stated in the intended legislation within that. Okay, so let's talk a little bit here now, we'll localize this. I'll pause. Any questions on any of the statewide data? Maybe it's a good place to pause for any questions. I know I'm throwing a lot tonight, and we're getting into the weeds. Okay, let's talk a little bit about James County Schools information. And so, the first piece that we often look at is the breakdown of the net assessed value. So if we go back again, think of that equation, net assessed value times tax rate gives me revenue. We're going to have a look at what your net assessed value is made of, because this is going to impact that, right, in terms of revenues at the end of the day? Because we typically really like a pie like we have on the left, that we have somewhat a diverse pie within that. The challenge in this legislation for the district is really two of the major areas of your pie receive new additional deductions, right? And so, when we look from 2025, and I'll just fast forward to 2031, it's showing when all the deductions are fully in place, we see that business personal property, which is in the yellow, drop by, you know, approximately not quite 4%. That's because in 2027, any business personal property under $2 million is getting pulled out of the system. And then we see the agriculture piece of pie get a little bit smaller. Again, we're giving those additional deductions to the 2%, and this is not a great representation because if we truly did this the right way, 2031, that pie would actually be a smaller pie, right? So we've almost gone, think of a pizza pizza, right? We've gone from a large to a medium, right, in terms of net assessed value at the end of the day. So we've changed the composition and we've shrunk the pie. And these things, as we look at it, are going to start to have some impact within the district. As we often do with Policy Analytics, we try to look at debt service for a lot of our districts, because depending sometimes on how you move your debt service needle, it can have impact on your operations fund. So as we look at the scenarios, we ran really two scenarios for the district. One is we kept the 25 debt service levy constant, and then the other, we kept the 2025 debt service rate constant. And it's probably seen a little bit more easily here. So if I refer in these future slides to the levy scenario, it's really saying you keep your 2025 debt service levy at that $4 million figure. In the 2025, we're keeping the 34/75 debt service rate constant, which in the previous situation with growing AVs would have generated additional revenue or higher levies each year in the mechanics of it, right? And these are just guardrails for now. You know, it's our work with the district, an assessed value is released here in a month or two for 2026. That's when we'll dial in with the district and your work with Baker Tilly in terms of the exact structuring of your debt. This was our way to try to get some guardrails and see what the impact looked like for the 80 districts that we're looking at really the last couple of months. So it's going to give us, I think, a somewhat accurate look at what's happening, but we'll definitely tailor that in. And here's the chart that really is going to drive a lot of our conversation. And this is net assessed value, projections for the district. The green line represents gross assessed value, so that's before deductions. And I'll call out a couple of things. One, really easy one, as you see that call out, which says BPP impact, right? That is the business personal property impact. And if you look in that year, the green line actually goes down, when every other year really around it, it's increasing. And why is it going down from '26 to '27? Because we're pulling out those parcels under the $2 million threshold that now legislation are exempt. And so that does have impact on your assessed value. If you think back to that previous pie chart, that's why that piece, that yellow got smaller. The reason the green line though continues to grow is because we do have some trending assessed values, we call it growth, right? Right now, economic data would tell us that assessed value would continue to grow. They did not change the assessment system, it's still market-based, so the home worth $150,000 could be $160 next year, $170 next year, right? Businesses will continue to grow. So that's why we have that green line still trending up, or just because we have some positive growth in there. The blue line represents net assessed value prior to Senate Enrolled Act One, and it somewhat mirrors the green line, right? And then the orange represents net assessed value after Senate Enrolled Act One. And that is where we see over the next six years, really a declining net assessed value as those deductions ramp up and become larger and larger each year. And it goes back to that as we increase deductions, we drive down net assessed value, and that's what we're seeing in the data. In 2031, you see it start to move back in a positive direction. That's because at that point, all the deductions are fully in place, right? We kind of set a new floor, establish a new baseline, and then it grows with gross assessed value, though at a more muted level, because we have larger deductions at that point. And so, we're in this really interesting time, to be perfectly honest, in that we have in the next six years that we're probably going to be facing declining net assessed value, which is different from what we've been dealing with the last several years, and how that's looked in terms of our rates and our revenues. And then in 2031, we might flip back to a situation where we have growing assessed value. And so it's going to require flexibility really from schools across the state in terms of how you think about your finances around property tax revenue at the end of the day. So what does that impact look like specific for Jennings County Community Schools? Again, this is an illustration, I want to pause, let me come back to this, I'll come back to that tax rate, because I want to set this up. We have, again, it's a roughly, call it about 3%, call it trending AV growth, right? And with any of our projections, again, we're making that, we tend to try to be a little bit conservative, because we don't want to overestimate your assessed value growth, but it is a projection, right, based on the best information we have today. So if assessed value comes in better than what we're projecting, the numbers that we'll see would look better. If it comes in lower, maybe we hit a plateau in terms of housing, right? Or have a pullback in the economy, then it could, and assessed value doesn't grow as fast as what we have projected, then we could see some more impact to the figures. So I think that's important to understand. These are illustrations based on really our assessed value projections as we best know it today, and the impact of what we do know in Senate Enrolled Act One. And that's what's really driving here, the increase in the rates. And so theoretically, the solid lines are the pre-Senate Enrolled Act, excuse me, solid lines are post-Senate Enrolled Act One, the dotted lines are pre-Senate Enrolled Act One, the teal is the debt service rate scenario, and the red is the debt service levy scenario. We're going to expect the teal to be higher, because we have larger revenues in the debt service fund and that. And so again, you can see that... And so again, you can see that potentially we would see anywhere from a 50 to 60 cent potential debt overall property tax rate for the school district increase over the next six years. And even in the levy scenario, that's holding that debt service levy, you know, constant. I will tell you, we'll show this, some of this is driven by debt service, a lot of it's driven just simply by the operations fund and the mechanics of the operations fund at the end of the day and its relations to the growth quotient. If you notice, you see a pretty decent jump from '26 to '27, and I don't think I've got a pointer here, I should have put a call out here, but this little larger than normal jump. That is because again, in 2027, we're pulling out additional assessed value with that business personal property. And so you have a little larger impact in '27 than that because of that additional deduction. So that's what's driving that piece there. And then again, you see it start to level out and, you know, when we move past 2031, because then all the deductions are fully in place. With the debt service fund, and this is again where I say a lot of your tax rate impact is not necessarily in your debt as it is in your operations fund. Because we looked at about a 50 cent increase on the levy scenario, and yet only about eight of it is actually coming in your debt service fund. So the majority of it is actually coming in the operations fund and the mechanics there as assessed value relates to the growth portion. This is also where again, the district, you've been below that 40 cent threshold. You could potentially move up over that 40 cent threshold. Again, that would require just some additional legal steps in order to do a project within that. Again, sometimes you have to do those legal steps if your project is above a certain dollar figure anyways, right? So it's not anything you can do. And that doesn't mean that the district's going to move there, right? It's going to be based on some of the decisions you make at the end of the day. But it is something that just with your Baker Tilly team, you're going to have to navigate and think about as you move forward within that, that you may just have to have some additional hearings or some additional steps if you're looking to do a project at the end of the day. Okay, so let's talk now revenue. And this is again, I think where we can really show that the rate changes and the revenue changes don't match, right? And so this is your operations fund net levy at the end of the day. And so in 2025, it's at that 9.2 million. The dotted line is showing, again, pre senate enrolled act one. It's got a 4% MLGQ, the maximum growth quotient, which is what we've had the last couple of years. That's what's built into that by just continuing again how we've been operating in the past. The solid line is what we see in terms of impact with your revenues as a result of Senate enrolled act one. And really, the first couple of years, they're pretty well flat in terms of revenue, not a whole lot of revenue growth. And the reason that revenue growth is being muted or constrained, in the first year, it's that new 10% credit. The homestead credit, that 10% liability, if I go back to that $150,000 homeowner not paying the $150 or the credit they're getting, that's that revenue that's not coming in, and that's why we see that change. And then it's flat really in 2027 because of the change in the business personal property, right? And then we start to see a little bit of growth as we move forward in those next several years. But really what we're looking at for the next few years is really flat line revenue in our operations fund. And the challenge, right, I think that we could all kind of think through that, is oftentimes expenses are flat, right? Utility costs go up, property casualty insurance costs go up, you know, potentially what are we doing in terms of salaries or benefits for employees that are paid inside the operations fund? Fuel costs going up, right? We've seen, you know, 7%, 8% inflation. Now, it's starting to cool, right? Inflation is starting to come back a little bit, but we still have inflation, and yet the revenue is staying the same. And so that's going to be the constraint that a lot of districts are facing is revenue is not growing and expenses potentially could at the end of the day. And really, it does, the interesting piece, the revenues don't change a whole lot depending on what you do with your debt service fund. It's one of the things we sometimes look at. For some districts, if you really increase your debt service fund rate, you could have fewer dollars in the operations fund. We don't see a whole lot of that here, and that plays into a little bit of strategy. But overall, regardless, really looking at a situation to start, you're going to find out tonight, too, I'm full of lots of great news. I've been told lately, it'll probably be a real hit at birthday parties around here lately. Because here's where we're starting, and unfortunately, the news doesn't get better because of this. So this is just the baseline piece. And we're going to move into some things that have some additional impact, that are going to create some additional challenges. And this is one of them. This is the post circuit breaker, that 10% credit and how it is laid out in terms of dollar figures. And roughly in total, you know, it's about $480,000, but you can see it's broken out between the operations fund and the debt service fund. And the blue that's in the operations fund, we already have modeled into this slide before. The challenge and the worry that we have for districts is the orange basically says when you go to do your 2026 levy in your debt service fund, you're not going to receive $137 in revenue in your debt service fund. And they really only let you levy for what you need to make payments in your debt service fund. You can't build up cash in your debt service fund. And so the worry across the state is as districts don't receive revenue in their debt service fund or their full amount of their levy, is how do you make up for that? Well, you use the cash balance you have in the debt service fund. Well, you can't build that up. So once that's gone, you have to use your rainy day fund or your operations fund to make your debt service payments. And if you go down far enough, there's, you know, alarmist that you could say the school could default on their debt payments. And we don't think the state legislative body is going to want to have a situation where legislation they've put in place would cause districts to have impact on their debt service fund, right? Or not be able to make payments. They had this when they originally put in circuit breaker, the act of 2009. And then they did what they call protect the debt service fund, meaning all the impact goes to the operations fund and none of the impact goes to the debt service. So if they were to do that in 2026, which there's a lot of belief that they're going to come back and do this because some places, this is a very big impact. What would happen is that orange, that is debt service, would flip to blue and would now impact the operations fund and the additional revenue you would not receive in the debt service fund, which is what this slide is attempting to model out. And so now we've added in that, at least on the left side, that maroon line that shows really slightly again about $140,000 to $180,000 less in operations fund revenue than we previously showed you if in 2026, they came in and protected the debt service fund. I'll be surprised. Maybe it doesn't happen in '26, maybe it's '27. I just don't know that they're going to allow that to play out across the state. I think it's a real concern, and we're hearing, they're aware of it and talking through it. So again, unfortunately, what that means is more impact on the operations fund, right? And fewer dollars in the operations fund, we're adding to that. So now we're actually seeing revenue start to decline. Then, because we're not done, because we've got to have some more things in the bill, we have local income tax impact. So local income taxes in the past has been collected at the county level. Obviously, it's a tax on your income and used for a variety of situations. One, it's often used as a, what they call certified share, where it's actually cash that is then a revenue that's distributed to the local units of government across the county. So they're using income and income to support local units. James County is one of those, and the school district is one of those. The other is when they use the local income tax as what we call a property tax replacement credit. And this is called PTRC for short, so if I say that or you see that, that's what PTRC is. And basically, the idea is we're taking the local income tax and we're using it to lower the property tax bill, right? So you pay less in property taxes. And all of these are set to go away in 2027 per the legislation. So any current local income tax agreements will expire. Now, there is potential, and it's written in the legislation, that new local income tax agreements could be established at the county level. And now they've also given other units of government the ability to establish a local income tax, municipalities, cities and towns of a certain size, not the school districts. As the school districts don't have an opportunity to do a local income tax moving forward. And what we have, at least currently what's been interpreted, though I think this could be an area for change, is that moving forward, the schools would not be a part of any potential sharing of any new local income tax pieces, nor a property tax replacement credit able to be established. Now, you're going to start to see some data that you're going to, I think, see why. I think this could be continued to talk about over the next two sessions. But this is playing, you know, really here in the district, I think we've got a slide here that shows currently, this is from the DLGF, that in Jennings County, and this is, there's more than here, but the school district receives approximately $630,000 in certified shares. So that's $630,000 is revenue that will go away starting in 2028 for the cut for the school district. And then the bottom left-hand corner, and it's a little bit small, really it says there's property tax relief of 1.6 million. And it means they're taking $1.6 million of local income tax and using it to lower property tax bills, okay? That is scheduled to go away as well. So what does that mean as we look at impact? Well, now, as we look at this chart, kind of again, coming back to what we're seeing, now as we add in the local income tax revenue, we see that much more significant drop in 2028 because that's $630,000 of local income tax revenue as of today is set to go away. Now, again, there is a legislative session in '26, there's a legislative session in '27. Could that change? It could, right? But as of right now, this is how the legislation reads. And so again, this would have impact on the school district's operations fund. I think technically, I think Philip and I are talking, this may actually go into the education fund. We've just modeled it here, kind of staying in the theme of our current slides, right? Really, the other day, it's $600,000 of revenue the district's receiving that goes away. So whether you have it the education fund or the operations fund, it's going to have impact on those two and those pieces. And so then again, as we pull in that post-circuit breaker credit, this maroon line on the left is really what we've been telling districts to at least start planning around. Because right now, the way the legislation reads, your revenue would be relatively flat in '26 and '27, would see decline. Do that local income tax in '28, and we think they're going to do something with that post-circuit breaker credit, right? And so we now see as we play that out, roughly about a $2 million variance from what we would have expected in revenue to what we start receiving in revenue really from 2028 and beyond. That's relatively our gap the other day, is about $2 million of revenue that is potentially going to go away for the school district, right? I wouldn't call it good news, but you're not alone, right? In this piece, right? You're not alone. We're doing this chart for a lot of people. This is going to be a challenge. I think the piece, every school district is facing the tax rate situation. Every district is facing revenue situations. You are on one of those districts, there are 74 school districts across the state that will actually receive fewer dollars in 2026 than they receive in '25. And 85 districts that will receive fewer dollars in 2028 than they're receiving in 2025. And you would fall into that category, right? And so there's roughly about 290 school districts in the state. So again, this is impactful. This is impacting a lot of schools across the state and really creating a lot of new and challenging conversations, right? Because we have revenue constraints at the end of the day that are really impacting the district. One of the things that the team asked to look at was, because, and I completely understand this. Districts across the state, school boards across the state, call it communities, have all been used to a certain tax rate for many years, right? And become very accustomed to that. There are so many districts that we work with at Policy Analytics that have a steady tax rate, right? They've had the same tax rate for the last five or six years, and so this is not uncommon. And so what we were asked to do was to say, what if the district wanted to keep that $1.18 tax rate, right? What would it mean? What would it look like in terms of revenue for the school district? And really what we see, and this is going to actually combine the debt service, the previous slides were just specifically the operations fund. This is combining both the debt service and the operations fund, so that's why the starting figures are a little higher. But really, you're looking at foregoing, you know, roughly, you know, $2 million starting in 2028 to approximately $4 million in 2031 in revenue from the impact of Senate enrolled act one. Not even from pre senate enrolled act one, from post senate enrolled act one, right? And we already know that we're giving up roughly a couple of million dollars due to Senate enrolled act one. We'd potentially be giving up now another $2 to $4 million at the end of the day. And this does not account for the lit impact, that $630,000, right? And that was kind of shown in both slides, but... So I mean, I think the challenge is, and this is why I think there are many districts that are going to look at trying to keep their tax rate where it's at because of sustainability. I think the question is for a district is if they were to keep a steady tax rate, where does, where does the $2 million, you're already losing $2 million, right? So the first piece is you have to, as a district, start to adjust for that $2 million impact. And that's not going to be easy, I mean, to be perfectly honest. And then you sat in the seat, you know, the school CFO for eight years, that's not easy, right? You're not talking close to, you know, 20% of your budget. And so how do you adjust for that first and foremost? And then to say, we're going to give up another $2 million, I think the challenge would be in being able to provide services at the end of the day to maintain buildings, to provide transportation, to get salary increases. While a noble goal, I think it would be an extreme challenge to give up really at the end of the day, you know, close to anywhere from $4 to $6 million of revenue and be able to sustain the district as it is. And so, you know, for that reason, I don't know a district that, that we have talked to at this point that has talked about trying to maintain your current rate. Because again, they're already facing the impact of Senate enrolled act one, which is challenging in itself. And so, and I think the other piece is depending on where your taxpayers are at, right? They may or may not see a difference in their tax bill. And the example I would give you is if I'm a taxpayer who's already at the property tax cap, and my tax bill would say I am supposed to pay $1,400 in property taxes, but I want my 1% says I can only pay $1,000. You keep your tax rates where it's at, and it gives them a $3 to $100 relief off of the original bill. So it's saying they're supposed to pay $1,100 instead of 14. But remember, they're only paying $1,000 to begin with. So you've lowered your rate, you've created a theoretical savings, but the taxpayer has not seen a difference in their bill. And I think that would be some analysis I would be really looking at as well, if it's truly a consideration because you may not be impacting taxpayers in the way that you think you might, right? That's the challenge sometimes of the property tax system and property tax caps is we think by lowering rates, we may be having impact on taxpayers. And in some cases, you might, and in other cases, you may not. And again, I would, probably the bigger piece here, I think I would just see, and again, part of the work we do is what the district is on future cash flow modeling, right? Revenue expenditure modeling. And I know we've been working through that already and working to adjust, and now the goalpost has been moved with Senate enrolled act one. It's going to create even further conversations. This will be even more difficult to pull off, right, within that. So I just think, appreciate the look. I think it's an interesting piece. The other just want to take a look at here real quickly is what does this look like in terms of taxpayers? We just took, I think, a couple of situations here that are a little bit illustrative. So this is North Burn City Taxing District. This is again, what they would pay in property taxes. In this case, all of the homesteads are at the cap. They're paying their max 1%. You see the bill go down from '25 to '26. That is the result of that 10% credit. You see the bill go down from '25 to '26, that is the result of that 10% credit. My worry, and this is probably just Barry Gardner, but a lot of people hear $300 and think I'm getting a $300 deduction on my tax bill, and it's not $300, it's 10%. So in this case, it's roughly, it'd start as $130, but I think what people are also going to find is as their assessed value goes up in the home, it's not going to be the full $130, right? It's going to eat into that. But potentially, they would see, you know, some impact there, but then it obviously returns back to, I think, kind of status quo of what we've seen in terms of property tax bills with gross assessed value. I think the bigger concern is this one. So this is Geneva Township taxing district. You can see from '25 to '26, there is a slight decline in the tax bill from that 937 to just under 894. But then, as the mechanics of the bill start to happen, because they're not at the cap, they have sensitivity in their tax bill. And so when the business personal property goes away, it shifts the tax burden, as we call it, away from the business personal property to the other units, including homeowners. So this would cause their bill to go up, you know, approximately $160 in that next year. And then, the following year, there's the opportunity for another $140 increase because of the property tax replacement credit that has been lowering their property tax bill goes away in the legislation. And so again, these are mechanics of the legislation, not mechanics of a school district operating any differently than you have to, right? And so I think this is again, going to be a challenge. You're not the only school district that's facing this. This is a conversation again, we're having with a lot, but when tax bills start to increase, you know, how do you begin to tell this story, right? I mean, this is complicated. You know, we spent an hour, and we're high-fly, third thousand-foot viewing this. And so, you know, as tax bills go up, you know, what does that start to look like? And also, what's that mean across the state? You know, will they come back and continue to tweak this legislation? I think that's one of the things we've had some conversations around, because again, this was framed as historic property tax relief. We're not sure that this bill has, at this point, created historic property tax relief outside of some decrease in '26. So then what's that mean again, in terms of tweaks in the '26 session with this legislation or the '27 session? I think are going to continue to be some questions that are out there. So a lot of moving parts, both in the school district and for the taxpayer. The last piece here, and again, I think this is just an interesting kind of look. This is, we sometimes ask the question, did the legislation do what it intended? This is showing really the tax burden, who's paying the taxes, of the taxes that have to be paid, where they're coming from. And you can see on the left, there in 2025, about 47% of it come from the residential. And in 2031, when all the deductions are fully in place, we've given all these deductions, right, to homeowners, and they're still carrying 49% of the tax burden. So it hasn't really shifted, and it's partly because we're giving deductions to the other areas as well. And when you give deductions to the, it's like this push-pull, right? As I give deductions to homeowners, their piece of the pie gets smaller, but when I give deductions to the other areas, their piece of the pie gets bigger, and it's this push and pull of who's paying. And so again, the other day, there's not a whole lot of movement in terms of that ultimate tax burden. And so again, just part of our data that makes us start to think, what may still be coming in terms of legislation? So I think that's it. I know that's a lot. I'm more than happy to answer any questions, but I cannot sleep with property tax discussions tonight. You have any good news? I get that question a lot lately, you know, and I, I would tell you, this is, it's not fun to be on your end. It's not been a whole lot of fun to be on this end either, just because again, it's going around delivering news like this across the state. You know, it's, there's going to be a lot of challenging conversations. You're going to have a lot of districts being, thinking differently. I know in a lot of places, the word referendum is a very bad word, they never talk about it, and they've started talking about it, right? And I'm not suggesting it's anything for the district here to discuss, but I'm just using it as an illustration of districts that they never would talk about a referendum. We present this information, and they all start talking, hmm, hey, we got to start thinking about it. That's how, I guess, how bad I think this really is in some places. It's forced districts to think about things that they never would have thought about before. So there's your good news, right? You're not alone.
So you can see why we asked Barry to come and present and share this. Barry is known to be one of the top thinkers in this area in the state, and he's so good at explaining it in an understandable way. Phillip and I have had the opportunity to meet multiple times and talk through this, and we really thought it would be something that we would like to share with you, and then also our community members, because we all have a voice in this, and knowing moving forward, that understanding these impacts could impact what legislation looks like, it's good that we're well informed and understand what's, what those leverpools are going to do. So we wanted to bring it to share. And if you don't have any questions now, but you have them later, you can definitely send those to me, and I can get them to Barry and get back where you are now.
Do any board members have any questions now? I would suggest that the good news, Travis, is that we're looking at it now, right? We're trying to be forward-thinking, and it's not just today. Nikki, her team, Phillip, we've been talking about this and looking at finances for school corporation. We have to understand our bills, our expenses, just like your home. Everybody has a budget. We also have a budget, we have to understand that budget. There are difficult conversations, it's difficult to make those types of decisions, but what I would suggest to you all in the room and anyone who's listening online, is that our leadership team is really taking this extremely serious, and we're looking at it now versus waiting until we have to be reactive versus really being proactive. And I appreciate that, and so thank you. I know that's, those are not easy conversations, they're not, you know, I know that that's all difficult, so we appreciate, I appreciate that as a chair of the board, and I know that the other board members do as well, so I appreciate that. And we want to thank you for coming. And again, we know it's not fun information, but it's necessary. We have to understand the facts, we have to understand what we're dealing with in order for us to respond appropriately. So we appreciate you bringing this information to us tonight. So we'll end the work session now, and at 7 o'clock, we'll start the regular scheduled board meeting.